Peter, you back in the States or are you up in Canada?
No, I'm back. No, I never made it to Canada. The board is closed.
Oh, you could, oh, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, just to Vermont.
All right, are we on now? I'd like to call to order, please, the October twenty, two thousand twenty meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Ms. Hope, if you'd please call the role.
Stevie Mans.
Present.
Aunt McCloud.
Here.
Peter Piffco.
Here.
Deborah Rain.
Deborah, you're here, aren't you? She's here unless she just fell off.
Andres Faradello.
Here.
Mark Payman.
Here.
Scott Holt.
Here.
All right, the next order of business is approval of the September fifteen, twenty twenty minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Any comments or corrections? And if not, I'll look for a motion for approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
As is unanimously. And next on our agenda is the report of the planning staff.
Mr. Chair, Rick Green speaking, Development Services Director. Angela Van had an update. She has emailed me and has is telling me that she is having internet issues. So if we can skip this and if we have time, we'll do it at the end of the meeting, or if not, we'll just carry it over to the next one.
All right, fine. Next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson. I just want to mention that we lost Chris Chase. He recently moved from from the city of West Palm Beach and under under the rules that set up the planning board, you have to be a resident of the city. An elector, I think Sam Thomas, is that correct? It's how it's phrased. And so he resigned from the board and we wish him the best and thank him for his past service. That brings us then the Declaration of Ex parte Communications. And let me begin by disclosing that I had a telephone conference with the applicant on Planning Board Case Number eighteen forty-six. That conversation will not prevent me from deciding the case solely upon the evidence presented this evening. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? Scott, Todd rather, why don't you go ahead, please?
I had a telephone conference, a Zoom conference actually, on the same planning board case eighteen forty-six with the applicant. However, any decision will be based strictly on the evidence presented here this evening.
Thank you. Peter?
Similarly, I had a Zoom meeting with El Sakarriatus in case eighteen forty-six, but my decisions will be based on the evidence presented.
Anyone else have anything? Scott?
Yes, I also I I also had a Zoom meeting with the applicant for on case eighteen forty-six. However, my decision tonight will solely be based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing.
And let the record reflect first that Deborah Rain has rejoined us. I think when we took the role, you weren't there, but you are now.
It keeps rejoining me. It keeps shutting me out and rejoining me.
Don't let them push around, Deborah. I told you that.
I did have a Zoom conference with regarding case eighteen forty-six. However, my decision will be based on evidence presented.
Andrea and Mark, the only two I didn't hear from, anything to report?
I received a error, an email from Eric Schneider, a letter from Mr. Jeremy Scher, attorney representing the Seminole Colony residential neighborhood adjacent to Kaiser University. My decision will be based only on the the information presented tonight.
Yeah, I think we all received that letter and that's part of the record here, but thank you for pointing it out.
Okay.
All right, anything else to disclose? And if not, then we'll move to the public hearing portion, the swearing in of the speakers. I guess we should call, John, your preference is to call the case first and then swear in?
Yes, I will need to bring in, there's probably half a dozen people for the first case, so I will bring them in and then they can all be sworn in.
Sounds good. Thanks, John.
Just give me one minute.
Did you need the script while that was going on, Mr. Chair?
Oh, forgive me, yes, what a great idea. Why don't you go ahead?
Pursuant to Executive Order Number twenty dash sixty-nine issued by the Office of Governor Ron DeSantis on March twentieth, twenty twenty, and Mayor Keith A. James's Executive Order Number twenty twenty dash zero five issued on April second, twenty twenty, the City of West Palm Beach's boards and committees are conducting meetings through media technology and have released the requirements to have a quorum of its members physically present at City Hall. On April fourteenth, twenty twenty, Mayor Keith A. James issued Executive Order twenty twenty dash zero nine, which specifically provides the rules of procedure for conducting city meetings, including requirements for quasi judicial hearings. To ensure the ability for the public to continue to participate in this hearing, it is being streamed live and available for viewing in the City Commission Chambers located at City Center four zero one Clemata Street on the condition that social distancing be practiced. Additionally, for those wishing to access the meeting remotely, they are able to do so directly through the applicable Zoom webinar link as well as the city's usual media channels, including W P B TV eighteen, the city's website, and the city's YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter feeds. Anyone from the public who would like to provide comment on an agenda item is able to do so through the following. Number one, in the city center, Flagler Gallery. Number two, dialing five six one three two zero six four five one and leaving a voicemail not to exceed three minutes. Number three, sending an email or video recording to P B, publiccomment@wpb.org. Or number four, completing the online public comment form at www.wp b.org forward slash public comments. Those accessing the meeting directly through Zoom may also use a Q and A or raise hand features. Anyone accessing the Zoom audio using their phone may raise their hand by pressing star nine. Regardless of method, please be sure to indicate the agenda number or case number for which you are providing comment. Everyone providing testimony must have video capability and will need to be sworn in. The swearing in will occur at the start of each case on the agenda. If you are about to provide testimony and were not sworn in, please be sure to indicate such and be sworn in before offering your testimony. After the applicant presents their case, staff will provide a presentation and then the public will have an opportunity to speak or have their comments read into the record previously received from previously received correspondents. The board will then go into executive session. Prior to rendering a decision, the board will confirm no additional public comments have been received by staff. And finally, for members of the board, it is emphasized that Florida sunshine laws are applicable and you may not use a chat feature or any other form of individual communication to discuss matters with other board members, the applicant, or the general public during the meeting.
Thank you so much. All right, we will then move forward with Planning Board Case Number one zero six nine B B. Would anyone who plans to speak or offer testimony, please raise your right hand? And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, Ms. Kaiser? You're muted on, by the way.
Good evening. How are you? Chair, Vice Chair, Board, City Staff, thank you so much again for this opportunity to appear here before you. Also want to wish everyone to say, continue to stay safe and healthy through COVID and also wanted to thank you for doing whatever it takes to continue to move life and business forward throughout this pandemic. As always, we like to make you proud about having Kaiser University a part of your city. So we wanted to share very, very, very briefly a few updates. The Washington Economics Group has shown, their study has shown that Kaiser University has a three billion dollar economic impact in Florida and supports more than thirty thousand Florida jobs. In twenty nineteen, Kaiser University had the highest passage rates in Florida on the state nursing exam and more than twenty percent of our students are active duty service members and veterans. Before COVID, Kaiser University earned the Blackboard Award for Student Successive Learning and was number one in Florida for social mobility according to U S News and World Report. I wanted to share that with you to show our commitment to our students. Even throughout the pandemic, we have the infrastructure and the resources to make sure that student learning was uninterrupted and was seamlessly transitioned into e-learning. We're proud to have a flagship campus located in West Palm Beach and because of your support, Kaiser University is home to eight N A I A National Championships and twenty-four individual national championships. During our inaugural season in two thousand eighteen, our football team held a six-four record, which was beyond our wildest dreams. In two thousand nineteen, we were undefeated until the first playoff round and this year we are undefeated four zero and we have our eyes on that championship. So thank you again for allowing our students to have an opportunity to play the sport they love where they otherwise wouldn't, learn about teamwork, discipline, and collaboration while also achieving an academic education. We're going to be talking a little bit about the football facilities tonight, but I'd like to introduce you the partner of my law firm. Her name is Heather Jo Allen. She is taking the lead on this project and she will be presenting case number one oh six nine B B to you. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrea. Again, for the record, Heather Jo Allen. My office is located at fifty-five Southeast Second Avenue in Delray Beach and I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the Kaiser University Stadium Bleacher Expansion Project along with the master plan update. To give you a brief overview of the approvals request before you tonight, we're making some modifications to the master plan that reflect an increase in the number of stadium seats from the five hundred and thirty-four existing seats to a total of one thousand three hundred and twenty-four bleacher seats. We've made some minor modifications to the uses of future development areas within the campus. We've made some updates to the master plan to reflect recent development within the campus and we're also requesting to amend a development regulation. And I'll go through all of these items in a little more detail. Along with the amendments to the master plan, we'll be making amendments to the site and landscape plans for the stadium. Just by way of a refresher on the background of the campus, the overall Kaiser University master plan is just under a hundred acres. It consists of five parcels within the master plan. Two are the commercial adjacent to Military Trail and then there are three parcels within the C S P D. The campus is generally located within a commercial corridor along Military Trail that falls within Palm Beach, unincorporated Palm Beach County and the campus itself is located on the western edge of the city's municipal boundary. In general, the adjacent properties in this area of the city and county are designated for commercial and industrial uses on the future land use plan while there is some high density residential just to the north of our campus. I'll go into a little more detail on the amendments to the master plan. Generally going from north to south, we've relocated the future swimming pool to the northern central area area of the campus. It was previously located in the southwest portion of the campus. We've also updated the master plan to reflect the recent parking lots that were developed as well as the proposed improvements to the Dalby Commons Patio and the new residence hall that was recently completed. We've also amended the master plan to show the full expansion of the future lakes to nine point seven eight acres as well as modifying the uses for this approved for this area of the campus to include administrative uses as well as the proposed expansion to the bleachers at the athletic stadium. And finally, we have reflected the modification to the driveway here on Evelyn Kaiser Drive at Military Trail. We added mountable curb to improve emergency vehicle access to this driveway of the campus. With respect to the amendments to Development Regulation Number twenty-five, what we're proposing to do is phase the removal of exotics within the twenty-two acres of undeveloped land within the C S P D. We worked closely with staff here to prepare a plan that would be less disruptive to the environment and that would result in a greater success rate for native trees and wildlife when compared with rapid removal of exotics. The amended condition provides time certain requirements for each phase with completion of exotic removal from the C S P D by the end of twenty twenty-four. This map shows the phases for removal of exotics. There are three different phases. And again, the plan was based upon a minimal environmental approach. It's supported by staff and by way of an update, the campus is actually planning to begin removal of exotics within phase one this week, weather permitting. When the athletic stadium was originally approved, the City Commission imposed a condition of approval that would require a major plan development amendment supported by noise and light mitigation plans for any growth at the stadium beyond the existing three hundred, sorry, five hundred and thirty-four bleacher seats at the stadium. At this time, Kaiser University is seeking approvals to increase the number of stadium seats to one thousand three hundred and thirty-four seats. This request is driven by a few different components. One is we're in the middle of a global pandemic. There's a lot of uncertainty as to when that may come to an end. So the social distancing and safety requirements imposed by this whole new world that we're finding ourselves in at the moment is one of the main drivers for the increase in the stadium seating. Also, as Andy mentioned, the success of the football program and the overall campus is, you know, driving additional need for seating at the stadium. I wanted to note that the campus is currently vested for one thousand eight hundred students on campus. And as of October first of this year, the on-campus student population is now one thousand thirteen students. So at this time, there's currently not enough seating at the stadium to accommodate the student population. To touch on some key findings from the noise mitigation report, the report noted that the bleacher expansion is expected to result in an increase of only four decibels over the existing sound levels. Five decibels is the threshold at which humans can perceive a change in sound levels. The report also noted that the expected sound levels from the stadium bleachers is consistent with the ambient noise levels in South Florida and concluded that the sound levels from the bleacher expansion project are not considered unreasonably loud, excessive, unnecessary, or unusual pursuant to the city's noise ordinance. We were also required to submit a light mitigation report. This is a plan from the report. The four existing light poles are circled in blue on this plan. It's important to note that no new lights are proposed and that the existing lights use spill light and glare control devices to maximize lighting on the playing field while minimizing spillover onto adjacent properties. These existing lights are separated from Seminole Colony by a hundred-foot landscape buffer, which further mitigates impacts of lighting upon this community. And the report noted that the average foot candle level at the western property line is zero. The slide shows the amendment standards that the applicant must meet for a proposed major amendment. The justification statement included in your backup demonstrates in detail that the applicant has complied with all standards specified in the code. Staff also found that the proposed amendments comply with all standards in the code. A few highlights here. Again, one of the drivers is of this request is due to the change conditions imposed upon all of us due to the global pandemic and the uncertainty of when that may come to an end and the need to put in place social distancing and safety requirements. Again, the success of the football program. The football team had a six-four record during its twenty eighteen inaugural season. Last year, they were undefeated until their first playoff game and so far this year, the football team is undefeated with a four-zero record. The proposed amendments also comply with all applicable code provisions and development regulations established for the C S P D. And I just want to note that Kaiser University has endeavored to be a good neighbor throughout this process during the original approvals for the football stadium and as well as at this time and has, you know, used all reasonable efforts to reduce any impacts on adjacent properties. Going to go over the site plan for the stadium now and I want to focus on the project site at the southern end of the campus. I'll note here that the project site is surrounded by properties that are designated for industrial and commercial uses on both the city's and the county's land use plan. So, you know, all the properties that are called out with a white lettering, those are within unincorporated Palm Beach County while the properties to the east of the project site are within the city of West Palm Beach. Again, the properties adjacent to the project site are largely zoned for industrial and commercial use. Seminole Colony to the west and the property is immediately south of the project site are zoned residential multifamily. But I want to note that this zoning district is inconsistent with the industrial future land use designation of these properties, meaning that the residential use of these properties is inconsistent with the county's plans for future development in this area. Here's the site plan. I know it's a little difficult to see on this site plan and probably on your screen, but it shows the existing bleachers and the expanded bleachers on the north and south ends as well as the hundred-foot landscape buffer. I think it'll be a little easier to see on this rendering. So here we've called out existing sidewalks in peach. New sidewalks are in brown. One of the main reasons we provided the additional sidewalks in this area is to support emergency pedestrian egress from the bleachers. We also have, we're showing the existing turf in front of the existing bleachers with a hatch. There will be some new artificial turf between the new bleachers and the field. We're also modifying the pedestrian, the vehicular emergency access drive to accommodate the location of the northern bleacher section. With respect to the landscape plan, I want to note that during the original approvals process, Kaiser University agreed to plant additional canopy trees within the hundred-foot buffer that falls between the football field, the bleachers, and Seminole Colony. The buffer detail here shows the density of the existing trees within that area. The trees highlighted in blue on the landscape plan were installed about a month ago as part of the tree relocate relocation and mitigation plan associated with the new residence hall that was recently completed within the campus. And this just shows that the campus continues to improve the buffer between the Seminole Colony and the football field by providing additional trees over and above what was already provided within the buffer to further mitigate any adverse impacts of the use of the football stadium upon Seminole Colony and to continue to be a good neighbor. Wanted to include a few photos of the landscape buffer that show the several layers of vegetation, including the new trees that were recently planted in this area. Couple of things I want to note here, if you can see, there are overhead power lines directly along the the property line between the football stadium and Seminole Colony. So that limits the type of vegetation that we can plant in that area based upon F P L's right tree, right place policies. But what we have provided is a hedge directly adjacent to the property line and then appropriate species within that hundred-foot buffer. On the photo on the right, I wanted to note that you can see the back of the bleachers, but as these canopy trees mature, there will just be additional screening in this area to, you know, further screen any adverse impacts of the football stadium. Again, a couple additional photos of the landscape buffer to show the multiple layers of vegetation and trees in this area. Again, the justification statement included in your backup demonstrates in detail that the project complies with the site design and qualitative development standards applicable to site plans. Staff also found in the staff report that the site plan complies with all of these standards. I just want to go over a few highlights here. Really, where the campus is now proposing minor modifications to the existing state stadium to provide additional seating that is needed due to the ongoing global pandemic and due to the success of both the football program and the overall campus. A few highlights here, the bleacher project has been designed to build upon the original design of the stadium. By placing the bleachers along the west side of the field, crowd noise is directed away from Seminole Colony while the bleacher structure itself screens a portion of the field. As I noted previously, additional trees were provided within the hundred-foot buffer recently to further mitigate adverse impacts. And both the noise and light mitigation reports found that the proposed site plan and the increase in seating is really not anticipated to increase any adverse effects upon the neighboring properties. Again, here in order to support the enhancement of residential privacy, the campus has continued to provide additional plantings within the hundred-foot buffer, including additional canopy trees within the last month to further enhance residential privacy within Seminole Colony and to be a good neighbor. There are no major changes to vehicular access to the campus or the internal street network. And again, here I want to point out that no additional lighting is proposed and that the existing lighting has been designed to minimize spillover into Seminole Colony and that the average foot candle level along the western property line is zero. I know that you have received some opposition letters on behalf of Seminole Colony. I'm happy to go over the points raised in this letter now, but I think I'll conclude with just a kind of summary stating that, you know, Kaiser University has made all reasonable efforts to mitigate adverse impacts on Seminole Colony. Mr. Waldman, who is General Counsel for Kaiser University, has maintained an open dialogue with Becker and Polyakov and Mr. Chestnut as recently as last summer and has worked with the campus to address any concerns raised by Seminole Colony community. Kaiser is also sympathetic to the fact that these residents may have grown accustomed to living near a vacant portion of the campus for many years. But that being said, this property has been approved as a residential college campus for many years. Northwood University, Kaiser's predecessor, failed to realize its full potential as a campus. Kaiser acquired the property in twenty seventeen and has worked very hard to turn the campus around and to provide a great college experience for its students. Growth of the campus is a great thing for the community and these sports programs are an important component of that. And, you know, as we have been doing over the past several years, Kaiser will continue to work to be a good neighbor to the surrounding property owners and to provide a great college experience for the community. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
All right, any questions of the applicant? Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was, as you mentioned, Ms. Allen, there was, we did receive a couple of letters in opposition from people representing either Seminole Colony or in one case, an individual property owner in Seminole Colony. And I'm curious, in in a in a letter that came that was that was presented by Mr. Chestnut and was included in our materials, he makes reference to a condition that I don't see in the ultimate resolution that was approved, forty-eight eighteen, that was approved by the board, the City Commission, when the original approval was given to build the state, the football stadium. And so I'm wondering, is there, is there any sort of actual binding condition that an amendment or chain or, you know, improvement upon the football stadium would require the construction of some sort of sound wall between the Kaiser property and Between you, the Kaiser property and seminal colony?
No, unfortunately, the, I requested the video and the minutes from the previous planning board hearing, but they haven't been made available to me yet. What I do know is that following the planning board meeting, staff, you know. Took into account the concerns raised by the residents. And they came up with a condition, a recommended condition to provide a berm with additional landscaping in that area. When the city commission meeting for the original approvals occurred. Neither the commission nor the residents really seemed to support that idea for a number of reasons. And so what the commission ultimately decided to do is to impose the conditions that you see on your screen here. That talk about the, you know, the noise and light mitigation plan that would be required upon increase in seating. Installation of additional canopy trees along the western property line. Limitation on uses within the hundred foot buffer. And then the the condition here related to stadium speakers. Installed to project sound to the east rather than towards the seminal community. And the campus has complied with all of these conditions and will continue to comply with the ongoing conditions.
And so to follow, thank you very much for for that information. To follow up. Would you, would Kaiser be amenable to impose to the imposition of additional? Conditions should be, should this, you know, should there be approval for the expansion of the noise to further? Reduce noise impacts from the additional ceiling.
So at this time, you know, and I'll go back to the buffer slide if I could get there quickly. We've already provided additional layers of vegetation voluntarily. So following the the twenty eighteen city commission meeting, additional canopy trees were installed. And then over time, as recently as last month. When the residence hall was being developed, there were mitigation requirements associated with development of that portion of the campus. And so we identified this buffer as a place to provide additional canopy trees. They are newer trees, they are going to continue and grow. And so as these trees mature, they're just going to further screen and buffer. The any impacts of the football stadium to seminal colony. So we've. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but doesn't your your own noise analysis? Says that the bed, that vegetation really doesn't do anything to screen noise. It does have some impact on the psychological effect of breaking up the sightline from where the noise is coming from. But I mean, so other than the vegetation. And the fact that the speakers are were designed to have a baffle to the west and to project to the east. Are there any other, other than the vegetation, are there any other noise mitigation factors? That are currently in place on the site or that are being considered for introduction should the approval go through?
Not at this time, and I will sort of reiterate some of the discussion that occurred during the original approvals process. The conversation around a potential sound wall was that the wall would have to be. Of significant height to make a difference because the bleachers are. At a maximum height of approximately twenty feet, so. And the cost of the wall would be so outrageous that it would outweigh any benefit to the community. And I think in the noise mitigation study, what it actually says about vegetation is that. Vegetation has to be significantly dense in order to provide more than a psychological impact. And so we're getting there. Some of these trees are still young, they are going to mature and grow. But over time, we are going to get to a point where we have, you know, some additional density within this landscape buffer.
Thank you very much. No further questions.
Or any questions for the questions of the applicant? And since I can't see everyone screen at once with the screen share, just speak up if you have any questions, any of the board members.
Yeah, I had a, I had a question in terms of how many games are foreseen? Where the bleachers would be at least fifty percent occupied?
If I might notes on that. So typically during, you know, the football season, there are five to six home games. And one to two playoff games if we're fortunate enough to make it to the playoffs. The field is also used by the women's and men's lacrosse teams and those sports also each have typically five to six home games per season.
Thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant? And if not, I have, I have one for you. When you were quoting this, the analysis that anything below point five, I forget what the unit of of noise was. That is, it's rarely noticed. Do you have a source for that?
Yes, it's, it is cited in the noise mitigation report. Perhaps John McDonald could further discuss that, but it's my understanding that that's an industry recognized standard.
I didn't know if it was something in the code or something industry recognize or it was a, it was a comment made by someone.
Yeah.
Someone could address that question. I'd be curious for the answer.
I can address it if you want me to. Heather Joe, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you fine.
That is a five decibel difference for the average human with average hearing. Is a rule of thumb that's been in place for many years. I believe it's in the nineteen seventy two EPA document that most of our. Environmental noise abatement and annoyance. Really work started from in nineteen seventy two. So I don't have a page number for that. This is such an established rule of thumb that the reference rarely gets brought up. But I can find that for you if you if you'd like.
And how did you determine that it would only be point four for this added use? And what was that based?
Okay, so, so it's five decibels, the average human with reasonable hearing. This is done with audiometry tests in the late sixties when they're trying to figure out how to do all this. Needs approximately five decibels before they notice the difference. And we're saying, my analysis is indicating that the increase in number of attendees, if we go maximum. Will result in an increase in sound level of approximately four decibels, okay? And that's simple mathematics that have been used over time and verified by field measurements. So we need five generally to notice, and I've even tested this on myself. If the mat, if the bleachers are fully occupied. The math indicates and my own experience and. Verifies that it'd be approximately a four decibel increase. And the typical human doesn't even notice that, right? So that's.
Have any estimates as to how much noise is created now as a benchmark? Because you said the added noise wouldn't notice. Have you done any tests to know how much noise is created with its current usage?
Current usage? No, I have information from up from similar venues. But I have not been down to Kaiser when an event is taking place. To to measure, but I have, I have a table in my report from other venues. And I have an idea based on my own experience and from the literature. Of what it will be and it falls in line with what I've, what I've estimated that. I predict that levels will be between sixty three and seventy five decibels and I, I really doubt that it'd even get as high as that. From the anticipated use. The normal, this is sixty three to seventy five is my prediction. Normal environmental levels in South Florida, I've done a number of tests, twenty four hour tests over the last twenty years. Normal levels range from sixty to eighty five decibels. From measurements I've taken in sunrise, tamarack, coral springs, Delray beach, a number of locations, so.
What would it be fair to say though, if you're more than doubling the size of the bleachers? That you would double the size, the amount of the noise? Would that be a fair supposition?
Well, if you double the, if you double the magnitude, if you double the pressure, it's going to be six decibels. But we're not doubling the pressure, we're doubling the amount of sources that have a certain pressure, okay? Six decibels if you, if you, let's say you have a speaker operating at. Two amps of current. If you increase that to four amps, it'll be a six dB increase. But what we're here talking about here is number of sources and that's a little bit different. That results in a three dB increase if you double. The number of sources, okay? And so we have more than double and that ends up being four decibels, alright?
Alright, well, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? And if not, thank you. I'll ask, would anyone for the public wish to be heard?
Mr. Chair, did you want to hear from staff?
Oh, forgive me. I do. Thank you, Mr. Green. So, Mr. Snyder.
For the record, Eric Snyder, principal planner. So Heather, for the applicant covered pretty much verbatim. What my presentation would be other than maybe some other, some pictures from different angles. So the one thing I do want to clarify, and Heather touched on it at the end of her presentation. This is not just a football stadium, it is a stadium, it was approved as a stadium. And so any of their sports currently look, as stated lacrosse and football use it. You know, they can use it for other programming as well. Are there any questions of staff?
Any questions?
We recommend approval of the case as stated in the planning board report.
Alright, any questions of staff? Go ahead, Scott.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Schneider. You've obviously seen the the letters and we're going to hear a testimony from, from people from seminal colony regarding their. Their opposition or their concerns regarding approval of this. You know, what is the staff's position with regards to their concerns and are there any additional or, you know, additional? Conditions or anything that staff consider, has considered or would want to consider now having heard. From the or seeing the opposition from the neighboring properties?
Well, as stated in the applicant's testimony, staff had required, recommended a berm when this first went to city commission. It was found that that was not something that was desired by both the. City commission and then the neighbors and the applicant at that time. We did get the extra trees, happy that they put in the mitigation trees in that area. Staff is always supportive of extra landscaping, especially in an area that's a hundred feet wide where the land, the trees can grow to their fullest potential. You know, if there was a requirement to put more landscaping in, staff would not be in opposition to it. Unfortunately, I cannot address what the issues are. The few times I've been out there on site visits. There has been nothing going on on the field and I have not attended one of the two years worth of football games that are there or a lacrosse match or anything else there. I, as you, are used to bigger stadiums than seven hundred seats. So I can't really address what these specific issues are as far as the noise going on. At this time and how that would be appropriately mitigated since I haven't. I didn't even realize there was an issue until the letters came in, starting at the beginning of this week and and that we've or at the end of last week that we forwarded on to you. So as I said. I can't address what the appropriate mitigation is because I don't know specifically what the problem is. Other than, you know, the, what's been in the letters and they've said that there's loud noise. I don't know how to mitigate what I don't know. So I can't really address how to top it.
That's, and that's a point well taken. To you, in one of the letters, I believe it was the letter from Mr. Chestnut. He made reference to complaints made regarding the noise to code enforcement that have seen, that have not been addressed. After reading that, did you, did you or someone else in the staff have any follow up with code enforcement? To verify whether or not there had been any complaints and if so, you know, could you tell us about what the substance of those complaints were and if they were in fact addressed or not addressed?
If you're aware. I did, I did call our city code enforcement to see if there had been any, what what the complaint status was. What I found was that. There had been some calls, we don't, I don't know who we didn't get the, I didn't get information as to to who it was. And if it was Mr. Chestnut or someone else. That we're getting noise and I don't know if it was during the games or what noise it was, that information wasn't there. As far as the specifics. But what did come out of that was that when our code enforcement looked at our city statutes, the city code, it specifically exempts. Athletic fields related to a school from having to meet the noise ordinance. So regardless of what our noise ordinance says and and the applicant's sound consultant, sound expert testified. And did his report on the standards that are in the code for normal noise. If this wasn't exempted, so. While, so our code enforcement never followed up because they looked at that provision and said, well, it's an athletic field. There's noise there, it's exempt from the code, so there was no follow up on that. And never got to the point of Kaiser being cited, Kaiser being in the code enforcement process. Nor notifying planning that there was an issue. So I also believe that they may have notified county code enforcement who then directed them to the city's code enforcement. So I hope that answered your question.
Very much so. Thank you very much, Mr. Schneider. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions of staff? And Mr. Sam, let me ask you, not with regard to this case, but generally. Is there ever a time in in the work of your department where measuring noise i- is part of what you do? Or is that considered more a code enforcement issue? Or do you ever deal with it? I guess is my question. And if so, how do you deal with it?
Mr. Chair, I can deal with that. We, we, we handle code and noise in particular. Two different ways. In the downtown, we have a certain set of noise requirements, particularly for climatology. And Rosemary Square through a separate ordinance that was adopted years ago. And in the downtown, we use decibels to measure noise. If it's above seventy five. An institution, a club could be cited. And we actually measured two levels, what is called DBA, which is general noise and the DBC, which is. Your base sounds coming out of, you know, music or electronic equipment. So the DBA level was seventy five, the DBC was eighty. When the noise ordinance was adopted downtown, code enforcement within the development service services. Was enforcing that ordinance for a period of six months through warnings. And then ultimately we started issuing violations. After about six months, all the downtown businesses were pretty much in compliance. And we had a fee structure. If you get a warning and then you get caught a second time, two hundred fifty dollar fine, a thousand dollars after that. Approximately two years ago, when all the downtown businesses were coming into compliance. We turned that function over to the police department. So for the last two years or so, the police department has been enforcing that. Outside of the downtown, we do not use decibels to enforce noise. It's a clearly audible standard that is used. So from roughly a hundred feet from one property to the other. If a person can have a normal conversation. Then they're not found to be in violation. Granted, it's very subjective. We've had discussions with the commission over the past year about whether we want to transition to a decibel level outside of the downtown. And the commission has indicated they do not want to pursue that. Having said all that, going back to Eric's point, again, athletic fails are not bound by that condition, so. We've, we've never cited the school or any athletic field for that nature.
I was going to ask, does that mean because the code specifically exempts them from noise? Is that, is that something we're allowed to consider then? In this review?
I'll defer to Mr. Thomas on that. I mean, I.
Mr. Thomas, do you understand my question? If if we were concerned about the level of noise, but the city exempts. You know, a sports stadium as part of a university from the noise requirements. Is that something we're allowed to consider when we review this application?
You would have to find. The noise concern. Within the standards for approving the amendment that cited in your report. In other words, the standards for this approval are enumerated. And if you find noise within some of those standards, you can address it.
I see.
But you couldn't apply the noise ordinance, which makes the specific.
Understood. Alright, thank you for that. Alright, any other questions of staff? Go ahead, Peter.
Just a small point. I mean, we had testimony that the sound from the consultant would be around sixty three to sixty five dBAs. Downtown traffic noise is eighty five. Just to give you a yardstick.
Alright, thank you. At this point then, John, if I'm still, well, ask, does anyone from the public wish to be heard?
Yes, there's Mr. Sher, Jeremy Sher, who I've just promoted to panelist, who has a public comment.
Alright, Mr. Sher, were you sworn in?
Yes, I was sworn in.
Okay, terrific. If you could proceed then, thank you.
Yes, hello, board.
Miss, we'll give this witness five minutes, not the usual three minutes, as he's an attorney representing a group.
We'll give you five Great, thank you so much. Nice to see everybody tonight, nice to see also that I'm not the only one wearing a tie. I was getting a little worried there at the beginning. You never know with these, you know, Zoom meetings. But, yeah, you know, my name is Jeremy Sher with Becker and Polyakov. We represent Seminole Colony, which is just to the west of Kaiser University's field. We are considered and affected, you know, resident, being within 500 feet, you know, per the city code. And, you know, just to briefly review, you know, the letter that, you know, I requested to submit into the record, some of the key points. And also to address, you know, your board attorney's point regarding the noise, sections 94-35 and 94-32 of the City Land Development Code specifically require for major and site plan amendments that the board take into consideration. Landscape buffering, specifically for noise, light, and other adverse effects. Residential privacy, including auditory privacy. And then something else that we haven't discussed so far tonight, which is property values. So, I do believe that, you know, this is with, within the scope of your review. You're certainly allowed to review this and, and discuss it. So, I mean, really, all that we're asking for is, you know, because, you know, it's sort of a fact-finding mission. So, we're asking that, you know, as one of the conditions of approval, that we have site visits. You know, come out to the field, and come out, you know, to the buffer zone during a game, and during a practice, and see if a reasonable person would be bothered by the sound that's emanating from the field. I think that's the easiest way to, to determine whether or not there's, you know, there's noise pollution that, that's coming from, from the field. You know, hours of operation, you know, as relayed to me by one of the board members, you know, there's been practices that were held at 5:30 in the morning. You know, that's just completely unacceptable, especially if they're, you know, out there yelling, and running around, and playing music. I mean, obviously, I think anybody would be bothered by that. And then, you know, additional landscape buffering, which, you know, Eric, the principal planner on this project, had mentioned that he would not have an issue with that. Just to address a few of the points from the applicant's presentation, you know, the expert report indicating that the decibel levels would, would only go up by, I guess, four decibels. You know, that's not what's being relayed to me by the members of the board. They state that there are practices for lacrosse, soccer, and football on weekdays and weekends throughout the entire year. Obviously, I can't judge the veracity of, of, you know, either the board or what Kaiser University is saying. But once again, that leads me to my point that we need to have a fact-finding mission. As far as the landscape buffering slide, slide 17, that to me really indicated that, you know, what they have there right now wouldn't be able to absorb any noise. They weren't densely packed at all. If you, if you, if you're going to have trees, they're going to be able to absorb noise. They have to be densely packed together so that nothing can get through. These were palm trees that were spaced, they look like seven, eight feet apart. I mean, they're pretty, but they're certainly not going to have any efficacy as far as absorbing noise. And then, what was the other point I was going to make? Simply that, you know, let's be human. I mean, you know, they're residents, regardless of the fact that, you know, the zoning might not be consistent with the land use, and things might change in the future, there's 140 units that are there right now, they live there, okay? They live with this day in and day out. What they're relating to me is that it is a major, major issue for them. So, I understand what the expert is saying, but I think at the very least, it's worthwhile to, you know, have a fact-finding mission, go out there during a practice, go out there during a game, and see if it's worthy of, you know, taking it, you know, beyond. And, you know, I think there's no harm in that. You know, it wouldn't cost any money. You know, as far as, you know, landscaping, I did speak to a landscape architect. You know, he mentioned that clusia trees or podocarpus trees could be, you know, a very, you know, cost-effective solution, you know, especially if they're densely packed and they grow. You know, so I think that's something that we could potentially consider, or work with your city arborist, and figure out a solution. Really, that's why I'm here, you know, everybody wants Kaiser University to do well. And the, you know, you know, increase their, you know, student base. But you have to take into consideration the residents. You know, the residents
Minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Sher. Would anyone else from the public wish to be heard?
Yeah, we can allow to have a rebuttal, Chair?
Well, let me first see if there's anyone else.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, no one has identified their willingness to speak.
Sure, Ms. Kaiser, we'll give you a brief rebuttal.
Okay, thank you kindly, Chair. Um, well, just, just a couple of pointers with regard to Ms. Sher's testimony this evening. His first request was a site visit by a person to determine whether a reasonable person would object to the type of sound. It, it's quite a vague request, who, who would be this person? And how subjective would that be? This is the whole reason why the city commission required us to do a noise study, to bring an expert consultant to examine the noise that's produced by the additional addition of the bleachers, and determine whether it's unreasonable. And even though we're exempt from the noise ordinance under the code, we still conducted the analysis to see as, if it was unreasonable, and as you can see from the conclusions, the ultimate thresholds are still way below downtown traffic. Also, what about feasibility? Currently with the pandemic, we're not allowing the visiting team to bring guests to the stadium. We're not allowing guests at our stadium. So, right now, it's a little bit of an impossibility to send somebody out there to do that during this time. As far as the claims about practices at 5:30 a.m., they're unsubstantiated. To our knowledge, practice doesn't start till 6:30 a.m. Students, we want to protect students from the Florida sun by having some early practices. We want to get them to class on time. We don't think that's unreasonable. And, and finally, his claims about, you know, the decibel level being more than four decibels, again, that's, it's, it's all unsubstantiated. In contrast to the noise study we provided you and our expert consultants, who's here to answer your questions. Finally, just a friendly reminder that our games are limited, five to six games per team out of 365 days a year. That's the only real time that noise is going to be issues as it relates to the bleachers. If the residents have an issue with noise during practices, that's not related to the proposed application this evening, that just deals with the bleachers. And then I'll finally conclude with the landscape buffering. Commissioner Neering asked us to send a letter last year to the Seminole Colony, explaining to them that the installation of the vegetation along that buffer is way beyond code. We've installed five layers of buffering, and the last layer, the, the, the fourth layer was required by the city commission, but the fifth layer was completely voluntary. We, we were doing the residence hall, we needed to find someplace to put trees, and we can continue to voluntarily answer vegetation in that area, as Heather stated, it needs to mature and grow. But we, we're way beyond code, we don't think additional vegetation is going to solve the problem here. I think that, at the end of the day, Kaiser University has done everything reasonable between the landscape buffering that exceeds code, the 100-foot buffer, the, the noise baffling system on the speakers, projecting the sound towards the east. I think we've done everything reasonable here to be a good neighbor. We heard from another attorney from Becker and Polyakov four months ago. Our general counsel, Jim Walden, responded to their request, and we never heard back from them. And then suddenly, we just heard from this firm again within the last couple of days. So, we're, we're, we're open to continuing dialogue, but we, we really just want to really relay the message to you that we've been doing this for three years. We've been really trying to do whatever we can, but at the end of the day, I think we've done everything reasonable, and we're here to provide our students a really great experience for a limited number of games a, a year. And we just, thank you, thank you for, you know, hearing us and hearing from our experts, and we appreciate, we appreciate your kind consideration.
Alright, thank you. At this point, we'll bring it back to the board, and there's no other public comment for discussion. And let's just go around the horn here and see what your thoughts are. Scott, let me start with you.
Thank you. I mean, I am, I am not indifferent to the concerns that were raised, that have been raised by Seminole Colony via counsel here today, in his letter, as well as the, the letter from Mr. Chestnut that was included in the backup materials in our packet. That being said, you know, I mean, I, I feel like I received the answers sufficient tonight from both the applicant and staff to believe that those issues are either not really properly considered by us at this time, or were previously addressed in the initial approval and dealt with accordingly. And so, you know, it seems to me like the applicant is, is, under the parameters that have been set forth in the original approval, has been doing enough to mitigate, in terms of mitigation of the noise and other impacts, such that, in my, to my mind, I don't think there's a reason for us to not approve the, this amendment. And also, I would just say that, for me, this was the only part of the amendment, of the amendments sought today that needed to be further approved. I think the other ones were based on the evidence and the testimony presented were, you know, were not necessary to be, for, 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 for further discussion to be approved.
Thank you, Scott. Andre, what are your thoughts? And you're muted on, unless those are your thoughts.
No, I was just thinking how I, if I lived next door to them, how I would, I'm sure the noise would bother me, but I don't think it's about how we feel, really, it's really what they're allowed to do. I think they've gone through the motions of, and then them, the Kaiser has gone through the motions of, you know, establishing that buffer. I, I agree that maybe it could be densified by some more bushier landscape material, like, you know, the clusia, or the podocarpus, or fishtail palms, or bird of paradise, or whatever else. But they've gone through that, and has been approved to, for that buffer, for that type of vegetation. I think that they've gone above and beyond by adding more of it, even after they've gone through this other development on the campus. And I, I think it's like, if you live on a golf course, and golf, your, your house is bound to get hit by a golf ball, but you can't complain about that because you live on a golf course. So, these people live next to a stadium, and stadiums by nature are going to generate noise, especially when there's more, when there's people watching whenever an event is going on. So, you can't think of it like, okay, and this is South Florida, so South Florida's growing. You move into, next to a stadium, and expect it not to ever get, especially with a university, to get bigger, and, you know, and I, I commend them, their, their success, and I think that it should be celebrated. So, I think that, you know, again, it's, I don't know if, no, I wouldn't necessarily want to live next to it, but I think it's, you kind of get what you, you, that's your neighbor, so.
Did you? Deborah, what are your thoughts? And you're muted on as well, thank you.
Okay, I, you know, I, I would like to commend the applicant, as well as staff, for the in-depth reporting that's gone into this particular project. You know, I've, I've watched Northwood develop over, not, when it was Northwood, now Kaiser develop over the years. And I, I think this is a, a very good project. I think they have provided the necessary buffers. And like one of the previous speakers said, you know, when you bring this type of activity, hence a stadium, football game, you increase the number of seats, you're going to increase the number of people, yes, the noise level will be increased. Maybe more, different trees could be added. But it's not going to be an ongoing, constant thing, where, 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 where the people will be disturbed by noise. So, I, I, I think the applicant has done a great job of presenting his case. If you drive through there, it's a beautiful campus, and especially with the expanding that they're doing. And so, yeah, I think they have met all the standards required.
Mark?
Your thoughts? Yeah, so I think this ship sailed when the CPSD was granted with the ability to build a stadium. So, you know, the caveat would be that with each successive amendment, I'd be just looking to see if the applicant is acting in good faith, and by the level of detail and, and commitment they're making to at least make all the efforts beyond what the code is requiring, and beyond what staff would even require. As they tend to move the target, I would say that this is, this is fine. I mean, obviously, the concerns are real, and that noise is probably real, regardless of what the sound engineers say about levels of decibels. These things are subjective. But this is a residential community surrounded by commercial uses, and it is, you know, fair that Kaiser acquired this college and this land to, to build out this campus. That land was undeveloped, now it is. That's how development works, that's how Florida's worked since its inception. So, I don't have any problem with this case.
Thank you. Thank you. Todd?
Yeah, thank you. I, I, for the most part, agree with most of the comments have already been made. I think the majority of this request is completely non-controversial, so it's really just the one item about the expansion of the bleachers, and that does seem to be a recognized issue, but at the same time, I think the testimony that we've heard tonight is that the request in itself is not going to substantially affect that one way or the other. So, I would be supportive of them moving forward with this application. At the same time, I, I think I did hear the applicant say that they were willing to keep working on this issue with the neighbors, and I think we would all probably encourage that.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, I think that the issue of the hours of operation of the field is not part of this application. We're talking about additional bleachers, that, that's all we have to do here. And I think that they've moved, that meant more than the minimum requirements of landscaping. They've gone above and beyond what's required, considering that there are no limitations to sound. This is not a, another opportunity to get a kick at the can every time they come in with, you know, a small change to the plan. So, I see no issues with this application.
Alright, I just want to add my own thoughts, and that is to, I echo what Todd had said. I think an ongoing dialogue with the neighbors is valuable. I think in good faith, you try to do that, just would urge you to continue to do that, because some of the proposed changes may not be expensive. Even a change may be, whatever plants you put in there, maybe a slight change in plant could, could help. So, I'm satisfied that effort has been made, like Todd, I would encourage that effort to continue. It brings you goodwill when you come before this board, that you can demonstrate those ongoing efforts. There seems to be a consensus here, so I'm going to look for a motion. A motion from someone who's not muted. I should be specific.
Alright, I'll give it a shot. I'll give approval of case 1069 BB with the two conditions.
We have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Alright, at this point, we're moving on to case number 658J. And John, when we have the new folks in, let me know, and we'll swear them in.
Yep, it looks like everybody for the second cases in.
Okay, for those who have not been sworn before, if you raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? Alright, thank you. Can we hear from the applicant? Is that one of those Zoom rooms we hear so much about? You're muted on. Just a trick I learned, using Zoom. Just a trick I learned, using Zoom. Yeah, I can make a re, no, I can't. I don't have control. Let's see here. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, great. Thanks. Good evening, commissioners and staff. For the record, Joni Brinkman with Urban Design Kill Day Studios on behalf of the applicant. Our offices are located at 610 Clematis in beautiful West Palm Beach. I don't know if I have any of our other associates. The Colliers is the property manager for One Clear Lake Center, PUD, DPUD, and which is the subject of this request. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce you to Lindsay Jean Lewis. He is a new associate here at our company, and he has done all the heavy lifting on this application. So from this point forward, he's going to do the presentation, and then we will both be available for questions after that's completed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Joni. And my name is Lindsay Jean Lewis with Urban Design Studio on behalf of Velocis Clear Lake SPE LLC. And the applicant is requesting approval of a major planned development to One Clear Lake Center, the downtown planned unit development to amend ordinance 171483 to include a master signed plan, which did not include any master signed plan in its original approval. And the One Clear Lake Center, DPUD is located in the southeast corner of Australian Bannion Boulevard, just south of the WPTV station and just west of Clearwater Drive. And it serves as sort of a gateway or an entry to the downtown master plan area as it's the northwestern corner or boundary of the area. And some basic background, background history, the One Clear Lake Center building sits on 2.9 acres of land. It's 18 stories. It's designated as Class A office space. And it's, there's a total of 232,000 square feet that's built. Its zoning is as a planned development, it's a downtown planning and development. And its future land use is the urban central business district, which makes it within the downtown master plan area. And it was initially approved in 1983 as 7.53 acres of DPUD. And it was further amended in 2004 to amend the boundary to what is now currently the 2.9 acre site that we see today. And the deleted area of the boundary is now the edge residential development to the south. And as part of our master sign plan, we're requesting approval of two signs with different identities on the same building face. We are currently entitled to one building identity sign on a maximum of two facades. However, the DMP sign regulations do not allow two building identity signs of different identities on the same facade. So we are proposing a smaller tenant sign on the same facade, and then the main identity sign that we are entitled to on the first facade. Now, the DMP sign regulations call for an external sign band, which we are comparing the smaller tenant sign to. And the external sign band regulations list out that there's a limit of placement to the first two floors and a maximum height of three feet and a maximum width of 60% of the applicable storefront width. Now, in this situation, we are referring to the small tenant sign and comparing it to an external sign band. However, it differs as it will be placed between the ground floor and the fifth floor and be a total of 15% of the applicable storefront width with a slightly increased height to 3.5 feet. Now, this request of the tenant sign is due to the building's unique architecture, similarly approved signage, and similarly approved planned developments in the downtown master plan area. And the fact that the signage of the smaller tenant sign will be significantly less than what we would be entitled to if we were to install the second building identity sign on another building elevation. So to start with the north-facing facade, as we can see here, there are planer breaks and a sort of jagged edge that doesn't provide a consistent face to install said signage. And on the east-facing facade, this does not have active frontage at as, as it's interrupted by the parking garage. And Clearwater Drive also does not have the same traffic capacity that Australian Avenue has for prime sign visibility and prominence. So for this, we are proposing the signage on the south-facing facade, which is the best building edge to place both signs on. And it offers the most clear, most prominent view of the two tenants in clear, in South State and Intec. So for the proposed signage, we are including a sign program of five signs. We are, the first two sign types will be the proposed signage, and then the last three sign types will have an inventory of the existing signage on site to ensure that all signage on the site is accounted for and codified. So the first building identity sign, we're limiting it to the 17th and 18th floor and a maximum square footage of 200 square feet. And the proposed Intec signage rendering that we do have will be 10.25 feet by roughly 19 and a half feet. And this will be approaching that maximum of the 200 square feet due to the nature of Australian Avenue. It's not like other streets or other roads in the downtown master plan area. There's higher speed, it's a higher speed thoroughfare, and this minimum speed limit is, or maximum speed limit is 45 miles an hour. Therefore, the signs need to be large enough to be easily visible to cars and civilians traversing north on that road. And for the second sign type, we have the tenant sign, which will be limited to a maximum of fifth floor placement with a maximum height of 42 inches. Now, this site, not only would it be significantly smaller than another building identity sign, but we are also asking for a deviation considering that external sign band requirements require a three-foot maximum with a 60% width of applicable storefront. Now, in this case, we do not have a storefront, but as this is being based on external sign band requirements per staff discussion, we will have a significantly lower square footage than if we were to use the 60% of applicable storefront calculation as per external sign band requirements. And the fifth floor height is also requested as to be able to be more visible and to avoid the growth of trees and that impending the view. And now for the existing signage on site. We do have a monument sign that also has the reflected tenants, or will have the, the reflected tenants that are included in the proposed signage for sign type one and two. And there is a variation of instructional signs, parking area instructional related signs that point out parking spots and directions of where to park, as well as parking area identification signs, which are more for site circulation and directions of where to sort of delivery services and loading docks. So for sign type four, three, four, and five, we are basing these on base ZLDR regulations with specific deviations that apply to our site. And then sign type five, we have a single window sign currently for Clear Lake Kitchen. And it's again similar to what currently is listed in the ZLDR regulations for general window signage requirements, where 50% of window panes can be covered for permanent window signs and temporary window signs and up to 25% of glazed area of storefront. And per staff discussion reading with the staff report, we do comply with the major planned development amendment standards as seen in section 9432 of the code. And there is generally no major development or land impacts as it's just installation of signage and accounting for existing signage that's already on the site. And the proposed condition that's set forth in the staff report is all existing signage, which has not been approved through a building permit, shall be legally approved through a building permit process, subject to a four times permit fee for installation. And us as the applicant, we do agree with this condition set forth by staff, and we're currently in the process of locating all the signage and making sure that there is permits for everything. If we cannot find the permits, then we'll go forward with the permit fees. And that concludes our presentation. To recap, this will be a sign program and an amendment to a major planned development in which we will mainly include the building identity signage on the top of the Clear Lake Building between the 17th and 18th floor and a tenant sign, which is not to exceed the fifth floor. And we would like to ask for your approval and your approval or recommendation to the city commission. Thank you. You guys have any?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions of the applicant? And if not, and, and sir, if you don't mind, could you end your stop share? So, so it's just hard to watch everyone is all, I'm sorry, Peter, do you have a question? Okay, I saw the hand go up on your Zoom thing. All right, may we hear from then staff?
Good evening. Elizabeth Levesque, Urban Design Planner. You don't see me too often because I mostly am going to the Downtown Action Committee. But I do.
There must be a welcome break for you to join a.
And so, so Lindsay did a great job. I, I don't have much to cover. This is one of the planned developments within the downtown master plan area. And therefore, it does have to go to Planning Board and Commission. So I am not going to go too much into detail of everything that he went into detail of. He walked you through the history of the DPUD. I did want to mention that Lindsay did mention that the parcel two that separated from the DPUD, it was rezoned to DMP. So that's the one that contains the edge residential building and a vacant lawn right now. Per the zoning and land development regulations, if a planned development, right, if planned development regulations are silent, DMP regulations do govern. So for planned developments that want to have signage for building identity or anything that, that match, that meets DMP requirements, they are allowed to do that through permit. However, the DMP did, regulations did not permit the exact location and size for one sign that they were requesting, the tenant sign, which was the basis for this amendment. And the PUD does have the ability to create a master sign program through city commission. And it, as Lindsay mentioned, includes, includes existing signage and proposed signage as well, as mentioned. So staff analysis was based off of permitted signage within the DMP and existing signage and surrounding properties. We did work with the applicant to get sign types and size compatible with DMP regulations. As Lindsay mentioned, they originally came in with two proposed building identity signs on the south facade. These would both be permitted up to 200 square feet, but with different tenant names. So the DMP permits two building identity signs up to 200 square feet with the same tenant names. So staff didn't find this compatible with DMP as building identity. Signs are meant to identify a specific tenant or building name as the name suggests in building identity sign. So staff did recommend that we split those, one building identity and one tenant sign. So for the building identity monument instructional and window, any modification to DMP language was carefully considered to meet the exact conditions on site. There's no additional height or total square feet above the maximum permitted for these signs within the DMP. So the tenant sign is really the basis of what we're talking about here today, because that is what triggered the, this amendment. The sign proposed at 42 inches in height is six inches more than what is the sign band, the 15% facade width. Whereas the DMP with sign bands do permit 60% of the tenant facade width. And for theirs, their sign permitted anywhere within the first five stories, whereas sign band is permitted within the first two stories. So staff looked at this and justified their proposal based off the fact that this would be the only tenant sign on the entire building. Whereas DMP permits sign bands for all ground floor tenants. So this would be an overall decrease in the sign amount and overall sign square footage on the facade. In terms of the signs on the same facade, the limitations on the other facades due to the building's architecture and orientation, staff understands that, that it is more limiting. And as there would be no signs on these facades, there again would be less overall signage. So staff believes that analyzing these two, it would be a fair comparison to what is being permitted for DMP. In fact, even more limited and, and resulting in less sign clutter on this, this building. Staff review the application as always based off amendment standards in section 9432, full analysis and staff report. Specifically whether the proposed amendment is consistent with all elements of the comprehensive plan. And the response to that being that this is consistent with the DMP element of the comp plan, specifically objective 2.1 of goal two, which states the city shall promote the growth of the downtown development base. More specifically, policy 2.2.2 includes reference to the proper design and placement of signage which supports businesses. And additionally, as Lindsay mentioned, no impact to land uses, natural environment, no impact to development pattern as this just is a sign program. So with that, staff does recommend approval for case PB658J. With the one condition as mentioned, the four times permit fee is something that is applied citywide to anything that is installed without a permit. So in fairness and meeting the city policy, that was something that we included. I wasn't able to find in the records permits or any record of some of the signage that has been installed even from the initial application. So unless we can find that, they will be subject to a four times permit fee. And that was all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions of staff? And then I just have one. If you could stop the share screen, it's just hard to say everyone what we're getting. Thank you so much. You know, I think the applicant makes a compelling case that there's so many unique things about this particular building that makes the application, I think, certainly defensible. I'm more concerned about, is there any chance what we do here today will be misused by a future applicant? Because I just, this building is so unique in the way it's laid out and its orientation. I mean, I have no issues at all with what's being asked for. I'm just concerned that because we give it here, will someone come back to us later and say, well, you allowed it here? So give me some comfort on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, we did a very thorough analysis to make sure, I mean, actually, their building is essentially more limited than what the DMP is, is allowing. So I, I think that that's a, that's definitely a comfort level. And I think that we, just the fact that we worked with them to, from their initial application to where it is now, to make sure that it's very compatible with, with what is allowed in the DMP. Not much variation in, in terms of that, the tenant sign. We, we really thought that it was, that it was a compatible and, and, and good compromise because of the buildings, the buildings' architecture.
Mr. Chair, I'll also add that we are making a wholesale revision and update of our entire sign code citywide that will include downtown as well. We understand that certain provisions of our sign code are somewhat antiquated. So you will see that, we will bring that to you in the, in the future as a code change. But to answer your question, that will in essence reset the bar, so it's not going to matter what happened before that.
Well, thank you so much. What anyone for the public wish to be heard?
Mr. Chair, no one from the public has expressed interest.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. All right, let me bring it back to the board. Does anyone have an issue with this proposed request? I mean, as they pointed out, it's actually less signage. And this is such a unique building. So if not, look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Planning Board case number 658J with the following condition, that all existing signage which has not been approved through a building permit shall be legally approved through a building permit process, subject to a four times permit fee for installation without a permit, if no legal record exists.
Do we have a motion? Have we a second? Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that brings us then to our last case, I hope, which is Planning Board case 1846. Couple more?
And that should be everybody.
All right, thank you. Would everyone who has not been sworn in yet, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? All right, thank you. May we hear from the applicant?
Hi, good evening, Chair, Board members. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Uh, Ellie Secoritis, uh, Deney Miskel Backman, 14 Southeast Forest Street in Boca Raton. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to share my screen. We all see that okay?
We can.
Okay, so I'm here on behalf of the applicant this evening for the redevelopment of the property located at 1301 Belvedere Road. Uh, this is the project location. Uh, the property is approximately six acres. It's 5.97. We have 95 to our east and we have Belvedere Road to our south. Uh, we have a few requests of you all this evening. The first is a zoning map amendment to go from office commercial uh, to office commercial plan development. Uh, of course, we have the site plan for the redevelopment of the portion of the property with 112 room hotel. Uh, we are also requesting a minor subdivision. Um, apparently that is not before you, but it does affect some of our Weaver requests. So I did want to bring it to your attention. Again, the project location OC is our zoning district to our east. That property is not part of the redevelopment before you. Uh, but it is commercial plan development. Uh, we are looking to also be commercial plan development, but our office commercial plan development, um, showing some consistency and compatibility with our neighbor to the east. So this is our proposed master plan. Um, I'm going to refer to our subdivision line often as an invisible subdivision line. It is really just in theory and not in practice. Uh, we are trying to provide a master plan with two hotels that will be cohesive and unified. Uh, well, they'll have shared parking. They will have shared cross access agreements. Uh, shared amenities, shared pool, shared ingress, egress and the like. Uh, but nonetheless, so the red line would denote that subdivision line. Uh, to the west is what we're calling parcel A and that is the existing hotel. It is approximately 3.65 acres and is developed with 199 room hotel. Uh, to the east of that is the proposed development really before you this evening. On that parcel is 2.32 acres and we are proposing 112 room hotel. Uh, in addition to our rezoning and site plan approval, we're also requesting that the hotel and motels be a permitted use uh, within the zoning district. Uh, currently the way it is drafted, it goes to defers or defaults, sorry, to the underlying zoning. Uh, hotels and motels are permitted in the underlying zoning, but with special exceptions. Uh, one of which, and most importantly, is a distance requirement between the two hotels. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to meet that as there will be two hotels on this property once, once hopefully approved and completed. Okay, this is our landscape plan for the parcel B for the new development of the site. What we're really proposing is a lush resort style landscape walkway. I don't know if you all can see my cursor. Great. So it's really in between the hu- two hotels. Again, we're trying to provide that cohesiveness between the two hotels. This would be a shared amenity, uh, between the two hotels. So it's a nice courtyard. Uh, we also have a gated entry. So this would be private just for the guests. There would be a gated entry here that would walk out through the sidewalks onto a very lush southern plaza. Uh, which would be open to the public. We would have, um, trellises and benches and the like. And of course, also lushly landscape. Um, so the parcel A is an existing parcel, as you all know. It is non-conforming to many degrees. Um, while we were not required to bring up the non-conforming parcel up to code, both staff and the applicant wanted to beautify that parcel. So we took this opportunity to do everything we could to bring it up to the best we could to code. Uh, and that includes increasing the number of trees on the property by 200%. Uh, we've also provided significant amount of perimeter landscaping around the property. Um, most importantly, the, I think the biggest and the most improved area is those landscaped islands. Um, if for those of you that are familiar with the site, it is purely asphalt at this juncture. So what we've done is increase the few islands in size that do exist and also introduce additional islands. Um, which gave us the ability to provide some additional trees and also shade trees to really reduce that heat index on that asphalt. Living in South Florida, we know how hard pot I can get. So with that, we're requesting six waivers. Um, and again, the reason I bring up the subdivision is because two of the waivers are a direct result of that subdivision or invisible subdivision line, as I like to call it. So the first is a front setback waiver. Um, as we previously mentioned, we really wanted to provide a cohesive unified development. This is one master plan. Uh, the existing parcel A, the existing hotel on parcel A is non-conforming with regard to the front setback. Today's code requires 40 feet at that front setback line and the existing hotel is currently developed at 17 feet. So while we wanted to meet the code with regard to that 40 feet, to provide that cohesive unified plan, it was very difficult for us to push the, the proposed hotel too far back. Um, it would just provide a disconnect and wouldn't allow for that beautiful lush landscape amenity right in the middle to be shared by both of those hotels. Uh, so we worked diligently with staff and what we came up with was this plan, which has 31.45 feet. So it's not quite 40, but it's certainly better than the 17 on the existing site. Um, and with, and it's just obviously the red part that's shown down here on the southern portion of the property. Staff is okay with this. Um, they actually were in favor of having it somewhat closer as well as it provides and promotes, um, walkability and brings the, the building closer to the road and allows for that activity as well. Um, additionally, as mitigation, again, as I noted, we're, all that green area is going to be lushly landscaped to provide a relief from the sun per se for pedestrians on the sidewalk. It's open to the public and they can obviously access it and use it at their leisure. Um, this is one of the two waivers that we are requesting that are a direct result of that invisible subdivision line. So by providing this subdivision line, we have now created a side setback requirement between the two parcels. Again, and you'll hear me say it throughout my presentation, which is not very long, I promise. Um, we want to have this cohesive site. It's being developed really as one parcel utilized altogether. So to provide a setback between the two parcels would only serve to dissect the parcels. Um, which is against everything we're trying to accomplish here. So this invisible setback, subdivision line, excuse me, creates the existing hotel um, being short on their setback waiver. So obviously that is one of the waivers we are requesting. Uh, we are also requesting a parking waiver. Um, as I previously noted, we lost a few parking spaces due to the increase in size or addition of, of medians or landscape islands, excuse me, within the parking lot. Um, however, the reality is the code just requires more parking than is really needed for the site. So the code requires 479 parking spaces. Uh, we are proposing 385. We have provided the city two justifications as to why we are, the, the, the property will function just fine with 385 parking spaces. The first is I T E, which is a standard, um, methodology that's used throughout the country. Uh, based on their standards, we would be required or the demand would be 342 parking spaces on site. Again, since we are proposing the 385, we would have a surplus of 43 parking spaces. In addition, we wanted to know what was actually on the ground. As you know, there's the existing hotel on site. Uh, Brian Kelly, our traffic engineer, who's also here to answer any questions. He did a parking study of what's physically going on on the property. He also took into consideration and added the demand that would be generated by the proposed hotel of 112 rooms. And what he showed was 241 spaces would be our actual demand. Again, with the 385 that we are proposing, we would have a surplus of 144 spaces. Now, at the end of the day, whether it's I T E or the parking study that we rely on, the reality of the situation is we have a surplus of parking. In addition to that, and to provide staff more comfort, and they did recommend approval of this waiver, is we currently have a shuttle that goes to and from the airport, which is 1.3 miles from the hotel. Um, we will continue to utilize that shuttle as well now and in the future. Uh, and in addition to that, we have agreed to, and staff brought it up, and we thought it was a great, great idea. Um, to have a shuttle that goes from our site to downtown, which is approximately 2.5 miles away. So between the shuttle and the studies and I T E, staff and the applicant are both comfortable that we will be providing with the 385 parking spaces, significant amount of parking to serve both the existing and the proposed hotel. Uh, we are also request, requesting a landscape buffer waiver. This is not because we are not providing enough landscaping. In fact, I think we're providing significantly more. But it's just not in the exact location on that perimeter that code requires. So we are trying to provide a new urbanism development on this proposed parcel B site. Uh, we wanted to provide and staff really wanted us to provide two parallel parking spaces on that southern buffer. I believe that provides a lot of safety between moving vehicles and a pedestrian to have that stable vehicle in between. Um, so we are providing significant landscaping, but we are, as I previously mentioned it, shifting it here. And we've also agreed to mitigate this buffer. We've also agreed to landscape, uh, the median between the frontage road and Belvedere Road as well. So with that, staff feels comfortable that we are providing significant amount of landscaping and meet the intent of the code and the purpose of that. Uh, this is the second waiver that is a direct result of the subdivision line. Then if we were to provide a landscape buffer on both sides of this invisible line, we would only serve to disconnect the two parcels. They would not be sharing parking. They would not be sharing ingress, egress. They would not be sharing amenities or anything of the like. Um, so again, while we've provided significant landscape throughout the property, we're just not able to provide it in this specific location. And our last waiver, um, is with regard to a loading zone. So parcel A, the existing hotel does have a loading zone. The existing hotel also has a convention center and a restaurant. And the one loading zone has been more than enough to, to service the existing hotel. This hotel, based on today's code, would require two loading zones. However, this hotel is a standalone hotel. It does not have a restaurant. It does not have a convention center. It doesn't have any of those additional amenities. Um, so we are proposing one. And again, this is one parcel of property, one master plan. So we do believe that the majority of the time when somebody is coming for a delivery for one of the hotels, they're actually coming for both of the hotels. So with two loading zones on the property, both the applicant and staff feel like that will be sufficient to service both hotels. And this is it. So this is what it's going to look like. Um, this is just a rendering. No landscaping is on here. There will be plenty of landscaping. Uh, but we did want to give you all an idea of what the building would look like, um, once completed. And with that, my entire team is here to answer questions. I will stop sharing my screen.
All right, thank you so much. All right, any questions of the applicant? Now let me begin with one, and it's something we had discussed briefly in, in the, in the session. If, for example, um, all this is approved, um, are there protections? I'm concerned about, for example, you just mentioned the loading zone. If these are ultimately separated and maybe have different ownerships. And you correctly say the loading zone is all that's needed to service both hotels. But if they go their separate ways, where's the, will that hotel that doesn't have the loading zone suddenly need one? And then how do we handle that?
Yes, thank you Chair for bringing that up. Um, so I am working with Stacy Wagner. I had previously submitted a cross access agreement um, and maintenance agreement with Stacy, and we will continue to work on that and finalize that prior to final approvals. Um, but ultimately what we envision is a protection just for that. So in the future, if one of the parcels are sold off or both of them are sold off, but ultimately are owned by two, by two separate property owners, we need to have it very clear in an agreement that runs with the land that it's completely, clearly denotes what areas are shared, what areas are not shared. Um, who maintains those areas and the responsibility of each party. And again, that would run with the land.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions of the applicant? And if not, can we hear from staff?
I'm just going to share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
We can.
Okay, great. Good evening, Linda Louis Senior Planner for the record. Um, so Ellie did a pretty good job at summarizing the project. Uh, the only thing that I really wanted to add was the inter-jurisdictional review with the project. The project has received traffic concurrency approval from Palm Beach County as well as the Federal Aviation Administration. Uh, FAA approval is required for all development projects in close proximity to the airport. And the FAA does review, um, to determine if the project will be a hazard to air navigation. And based on the letter provided, the FAA had no objections to the report. Uh, staff is recommending approval of planning board case number 1846 with conditions. As staff has found that the application complies with the rezoning standards for the plan development pursuant to section 9432 of the zoning and land development regulations. Also, as noted in the staff report, um, staff is supporting the six waiver requests, uh, that goes along with the project. Uh, these are the conditions of the approval. Uh, staff is requesting that the applicant prior to scheduling for city commission, that, uh, the applicant address all outstanding, uh, technical comments, uh, from the P P R C. Uh, just to clean up the plans, the staff is also recommending, uh, or recommending that the applicant provide a CCTV video of the existing sanitary sewer, uh, prior to city commission. The other conditions deal with, as Ellie had mentioned, the cross access agreement as well as, um, the provisions for the maintenance, uh, of the landscaping in the right of way. And that concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. Any questions of staff? And if not, uh, Mr. Roach, have we any, uh, public comment?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't see any public comment, no.
All right, then we'll bring it back to the board. Um, does anyone have any concern about this proposed application? I mean, from my perspective, you know, we know the city needs additional hotel space. To me, this is a major beautification of that area. I particularly like, you know, I'll trade off asphalt, uh, parking that's not needed for, you know, shade trees and other things, I think, really help the area. So I, I think it's a good looking project. Does anyone else have any thoughts they wish to share?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I would just add that, uh, I agree with you and also that, um, I had the same, I, I had the same, similar concern to the one that you had expressed, uh, when you asked your question. Um, and I think that so long as the applicant has the, uh, you know, requisite legal instruments in place to ensure that should there be a time there not be unity of ownership, uh, between the two parcels, once subdivided, um, that they, that, you know, the shared access, the shared amenities, shared loading zone will, uh, and right, rights of way, et cetera, will be, will continue and run with the land in perpetuity. Um, then, then I think that, that those concerns go away and, and, uh, I think it's a wonderful project.
And we can be cautiously optimistic, the reach agreement, since they represent both sides of that contract negotiations. So hopefully they can find themselves. Um, any other comments or thoughts? And if not, I'll look for a motion. Did I mention in each one unmute earlier?
Moved to approve planning board case eighteen forty-six with the conditions listed in the staff report, six conditions.
All right, we have a motion? Have we a second?
Mr. Chair, does that include granting the six waivers just requested?
Sorry, yes, that did include granting the six waivers included in the staff report.
Is that something we could do in a single motion, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir, if there's, doesn't appear to be any objections to any of them. So just want to be clear that all six of the conditions are included and all six of the waivers are granted.
I think Todd meant that.
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, with that clarification, have we a second on the clarified motion? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I think then, next on our agenda are code revision cases, of which there are none. Before we, Mr. Green, did you want, you know, the staff report, is there anything you wish to add?
We had one.
We could wait till next time if you.
Yeah, A- A- Angela's on. We just had one update. Angela, if you want to just mention it real quickly, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, good evening. Sorry for the lateness, internet issues here. But the request, the board heard back, and it was way back in June, I believe, when you heard this before the planning board, was amendments to the downtown action, downtown action plan, section of the code, and also the comp plan to amend the zoning for the northwest section. This was part of the steadily report to do several things. One was to revise the incentive districts along Bain Boulevard to some increased height, some decreased height in line with the
I remember.
Development along there. Also divided centers for workforce housing. So it was also to buy the centers to allow you to get additional height for workforce housing and do some more changes along that current and Rosemary Avenue. Again, you heard this back in June because I had to go up to the state. It's just coming back and it was approved by the city commission on the twenty-first by five to zero vote.
Well, thank you for that update. And we move on to other business, unfinished business, new business?
Mr. Chair, I'll just, I'll just mention real quickly that despite COVID, we finished our fiscal year on September thirtieth. I'm pleased to say that our, the Development Services Department finished almost two million dollars ahead in revenue of what we budgeted. We budgeted fifteen million collected over seventeen. And to put that, put that into perspective, it wasn't as much as we did last year, but it was still higher than fiscal years twelve through fiscal year seventeen. So again, despite COVID, we had a very good year. We currently have about seven hundred million dollars in projects under construction right now and another four hundred million in plan reviews. So the health of the city is still very strong. So just wanted to pass that on.
We appreciate that. Very, very nice to hear. All right, if there's no other unfitted or new business, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Andre, do you want to say something?
No, 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 same here.